Can we do it at a forum or something?
We'll try to schedule something. I mean, I would concur with Mrs. McLaughlin that we do, let's do a blueprint for change discussion and then the other two if you could postpone it to some other time. I'll try to find time, ma'am.
Okay. So the others, okay, Blueprint for Change will postpone the Ed Summit. On the newsletters, we just want to let you know because Pam would like some clarity on this. We had a, we feel like we're still in the middle of developing a newsletter process that works well. We had a presentation today that our Blackboard, the old format we had with the Keep in Touch, did not allow us to measure the user end, you know, how many people actually opened and read. The new, the new process does, but there are problems with the process because of the link being a hurdle for people. If they don't see the actual newsletter on there and they have to click the link, we think it's a hurdle. So anyway, just to let you know, we're still in the process of working on that, but for now, we wanted to make sure that Pam had some direction for the EAA's that we are, we are using the current plan, the current process until we decide on something else. Mr. McLaughlin?
So as part of the PEC work session today, they heard that they got some statistics based on click-throughs for their newsletters. They found out that Sandy's most recent newsletter, which goes to 20,000-plus people, had 51 click-throughs. And it could be a thousand.
Although I'll say previously, they told me a thousand, so we're going to sort through that.
Right. But anyway, it's a big drop-off. Pat's, which goes to a similar number, only got 737 clicks. So that's a serious problem. And my advocacy for the time being would be to go back to our old version, which is the HTML version, as opposed to the publisher version until we move forward. But I know there are going to be other opinions.
I would like to, before, could we get a little feedback from Pam about, all right, let's take some comments from the board instead. It looks, okay. Yes, Tammy?
I just, I just have a question. Did we do an analysis of how many clicks before and after?
Problem is, we could not do that. The old Blackboard, the Keep in Touch, you can't do it. And so what we asked, in the PEC meeting today, we asked people to do is go back and figure out kind of a third way. Either get Blackboard to figure out how to allow us to keep track, but things like constant contact, right, we can't use because of our need for security, you know, and privacy. So what we've asked the staff to do is sort of find another way. So what Mr. McLaughlin is suggesting is that in the meantime, we go back to the old way. Ms. McLaughlin?
I am thrilled that Mr. McLaughlin, and it sounds like others, shared my concern with this new model. In fact, I've delayed doing a newsletter when I saw what Ms. Evans' format looked like. So I'm very supportive of what Mr. McLaughlin said at a minimum because when I did send out my fall newsletter, I was thrilled with the email feedback I got from families. They clearly clicked and read it and were thoughtful in giving me input back. So I've been very worried about the publisher version. And I really think that at minimum, being able to just go back to the old version for now, we have a better sense that they opened it up and it's right there for them to read.
Okay. I think we have to do a show of hands, but first, Mrs. Schultz?
So can I have a segue for just a second? Could we please call this PEC? Please, 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 I'm begging you. So I'll leave that at that. Second of all, the expanded conversation was, is it, are there not other alternatives? And I think we've been asking that same question for some time. And I do think we need to get, I know, I do think that we need to look at the alternatives that may be available to us. And I think that maybe a little bit of haste needs to be put to that because I do think our engagement with the public on a regular basis is, is a crucial component of what we do. And in fact, is probably one of the most crucial, is communicating what we do, how we're doing it, how we're representing people, how we're, you know, conducting, you know, the public's business. And so, you know, we've kind of foot dragged, I feel like, to this point, but I do think that some other options need, you know, to be investigated. And if we want to do the publisher, that's fine, but I think that both should be available to us. I know it's going to be frustrating for Ms. Goddard and the school board staff after having invested a fair amount of time being trained to do things one way and do things another way. But I feel like maybe this has not had the visibility that it should have.
Right. I'm going to, on that note, Ms. Goddard, how do you feel about offering both options? Or would, would you think it'd be much easier for the EAA's for us to pick one as our plan? Go ahead.
I think when we had this discussion at PEC, and it was a good one this morning, that we were going to look at some solutions and options, which may be one of those. People would have a choice. You know, we're just starting to kick around some ideas. So my recommendation would be to stick with publisher at the moment until, and we can, we can hustle up and find a solution because the, because we depend on the EAA's to do this work. I don't know how, it's, you certainly need to chime in here.
Right. They don't have the skill set with HTML. And although my department can provide that support, and we're happy to do that, it's, it's a little frustrating.
Okay. Well, I'll tell you what. It is almost 7:00, and I'm thinking, rather than reopen this conversation, maybe, do people feel comfortable allowing, just a second, Mrs. Goddard and Barb to choose one way for now until we have something better? Okay, Ms. McLaughlin?
I really appreciate what you're trying to do, Ms. Hines. The first point I'd like to make is, we are 12 elected officials, and one of the things we've struggled with is the fact that unlike our peers on the Board of Supervisors, who each of the 10 decide how they run their offices and they can communicate to their constituents as they want and please, we work as a one unit, and it's been limiting at times. But what I wanted to ask Ms. Hunter is, in my own family email just now, I got the newest family gram, and it's beautiful and lovely and exactly what I'm sure all of us would like on the board. So it's disappointing to see that the system, the school system and/or the superintendent is able to communicate this way, but we're not as the school board. Just that, wanted to make that one point. Second thing is, I'm looking at my Braddock supervisors, and he works for the county government, and he has constant contact. So I'm really struggling by this, what continues to be so many hurdles that really, the only thing I'm, I'm really ready to say to my colleagues is, then maybe when we're trying to figure out the budget, if it's difficult on, and I'm very sensitive to Ms. Hunter's department, but we're bored at 12, and we don't even have one communications person to help us. So there's a problem there when, you know, this, I just don't even find it acceptable that we're at this point that we can't figure out how to get a workable newsletter for 12 elected officials with a $2.5 billion budget.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Maybe the solution is, and I think we're going to get some costs associated with this, is to identify a freelance person who would be dedicated to the school board, who's conversant and expert in HTML, which is what the, our newsletters are produced in, that you just referenced, the MyFCPS Family, which is a very complicated coding software, which is the, which the EAA's have been struggling with. And so maybe one of the solutions we can bring back to the table is, we can identify a freelancer that we would just pay on an hourly rate to provide support to all the board members who would like to put out a newsletter. We would go back to the HTML format, so you get everything that you want in that. You get graphics, you get photos. Because remember, that's why we moved away from the HTML format, because we couldn't accommodate all the needs and desires of the board members to have photos, subheads, which are all really good practices for a newsletter, you know, to put together a good newsletter. Because our EAA's are not trained in HTML's complicated coding. So perhaps that will be one of the solutions we bring back, and that would solve the problem.
But you'd addressed with PEC, why constant contact can't be used?
Yes. We can't, our security prevents us, our security that we have in place to protect student data records will not allow us to export all, if you want to send to everybody in your district, will not allow us to export those emails into an external vendor.
So that's, that's why the Board of Supervisors don't have that limitation?
Exactly. Yeah. Exactly. And I do hear your frustration. I really do.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate the clarity. Mr. Belkoff?
I have a comment and a question. So I'll ask the question first, which is, I think one issue that comes up is who's paying for this, right? And I am looking at Supervisor Cook's email, and it does not say that it was paid by him as an individual or his campaign or anything. So I assume this means that this came from him as, as a county supervisor. So then the question, the question that I have is, I wouldn't mind getting some legal advice about sort of where are the boundaries about using FCPS resources to send out what kind of information, okay?
As the chairman, I'll look into that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. The other thing is-
I hear, I can hear and see the level of frustration here.
Mr. Chair, we did that last year on PEC.
If it's, if it's reminding me, I'll, I'll take the same email back and make sure that I read it. I appreciate that. Okay. The comment I would make is, I think Mrs. Strauss and I were both at the same session at NSBA when there was a gentleman who gave you the fire hose of all the new stuff going on in social media, and I came up with my head spinning. But there's some, but one of the things that I actually remembered was something called curating tools. And I think there is a whole generation of stuff that's out there, and I wonder, I think it may be worth investigating whether there are tools, you know, that are not, I don't, I don't know what we're using, but if there are things that are fresh, right, this world is changing so rapidly. So I just want to make that suggestion as well.
And Mr. Stork?
When PEC put this together with Barbara a couple years or so ago now, we actually got legal opinions. We have, there's a lot of this information already there. We just need to probably recirculate it, but it is, we absolutely took the time to make sure that we knew kind of what that was. And I think it got presented to the board, but again, it gets buried under the next pile of stuff. So if you can just recirculate it, I think it'll, I think it'll address your concern.
Okay. Thank you. I think the issue right now is, you know, we know that going forward, we need something better. We know what the issues are. But in the meantime, and I, I mean, I hate, I hate to say this, but I hear people saying that they want to be able to use, I don't know, maybe we should have a show of hands. If you feel, knowing that it's, it is more challenging for the EAA's to use the old system, it takes more time for them to use the old system? Is that what I'm hearing?
They have to have some help.
They have to have communications? Okay, fine. So no, but knowing that, can we just kind of have a show of hands do, and, and, I mean, am I hearing from you, Ms. Goddard, that asking to be able to do either or is, I mean, that might, maybe that's the way we do it? Just leave the choice up to the board members? Does that-
Well, we're happy to accommodate whatever you all want. Meredith, who normally helps out hand-in-hand with the EAA's, is on maternity leave. We have another person on, in my shop who can help with that if folks want to go back to that, the kit format.
Okay. Well, I think, what I'm hearing is that people want to have that option. So one or the other. And maybe we get you an intern real quick or something? I don't know. All right. I think that's all we needed, a choice. I think we're giving board members the choice to do, right? To do either publisher or for now until we find the solution.
And I do think that if we're mindful-
Hang on a second. I mean, look, let's have a vote if people-
So you restate what you want us to vote on, please?
Well, I just, I don't want to be making this decision myself. I've just offered that, that we give school board members a choice. Show of hands if you think that's the way we should go, that everybody has a choice whether to use the old system or the new system.
First of all, I apologize that I'm not up to speed on this issue, and so I've not been helpful. But I do, I think most of the time, we do a better job of taking it to the committee and bringing back a recommendation. And if it's helpful, I'd be happy to attend the next PEC meeting with Barbara for us to come up with a clearly defined, how long is that? But in the meantime, fine, do what, do what y'all want to do, but I just feel like we need a, a solution.
Well, and that's, that's what we're talking about now is in the meantime, because the EAA's want to know what, you know. So in the meantime, do we give board members a choice between old and new? Raise your hand if you like that way of going about it. Okay. That seems to be the winner. Okay. All right. Okay. Next up for us is the public engagement piece of the Blueprint, Blueprint for Change, Community Outreach. And Barbara, if you want to tell us what the plan is?
Sure.
We had a great opportunity to discuss this at this morning's PEC meeting. And it is also part of the agenda item from earlier in the day that Mr. Plattenberg reviewed. We felt strongly that it needs to be, expectations needed to be very clear about the community engagement process on both sides. What we expect from the community and what they can expect and how their participation will be used by the school board. So we stated a very clear objective as part of, to start off this process. And it got revised just a little bit, and I think for the better, definitely, in that PEC meeting this morning. So I'm going to include the revision if you don't mind. I know that might be a little confusing. If you're looking at what the agenda item, the attachment to the agenda item, which says Blueprint for Change proposed, can you, Joanne, can you bring that up from this morning's Blueprint for Change agenda item? The objective, and I'll, and I'll just read it, is to engage our community, to enhance their understanding of school start time changes, and to obtain feedback on the challenges and opportunities for each scenario that will be presented. Our promise is that we will keep our community informed, we will listen to and acknowledge their concerns and aspirations, and we will provide feedback on how their input influenced a school board decision. So our meeting this morning with the PEC members, we all agree to this objective, and it's here, of course, for your, for your review and, and comment. Okay. You'll bring it up in a second. Let me just go over sort of the process that we have laid out as a proposed process. Eight meetings will be held, one in each cluster, to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to participate. We're going to schedule these in late May and early June, likely in cafeterias of our schools. Of course, we'll publicize these opportunities in all the ways that we, that we have available to us. In addition, for those people who can't make a meeting, and you don't have to live in a particular cluster to attend that cluster meeting, you can attend any of the cluster meetings, no matter where you live. But we're going to have the same information online, too, to give folks a chance to participate online if they didn't get a chance to come to a, a meeting. So the meeting format and agenda is laid out as a welcome by Jeff Plattenberg. We'd like to get Dr. Garza do an opening video, and we want her to describe the historical context, the process used to arrive at this juncture. And the reason for this is to provide consistency throughout all the cluster meetings. And one of her key messages will be, yes, we will be doing this, and we're looking at 2015 as the implementation timeframe, 2015, '16 school year. Then there is going to be a presentation by Doctors Lewin or Owens on the sleep research and the challenges specific to Fairfax County Public Schools. So we want to make sure that people understand the thinking behind the change. And then I will be instructing on how, how the feedback from the community engagement will be used, and then giving them instructions for small group dialogues. And I think one of the key messages here is, we want all your thoughts and ideas, although we may not be able to use them all. But these scenarios that you all decided on earlier in the day, these, these represent our best thinking, even though it could be a hybrid, you know, that might result from your discussions. So we're asking folks to break up into eight to 10 people per group, and our cafeteria tables are well-suited for that kind of dialogue. We're going to ask each group to assign a facilitator, a recorder, and one reporter within each group. The group will have in front of them the four scenarios and, and will be asked to know the challenges and strengths of each scenario. So they'll have a sheet that they, that will all be, it'll already be a template. And with each challenge noted, the group will be asked to brainstorm a solution. Then they're going to capture their work on this large chart paper and post on the paper on the wall. And then we also agreed this morning to have, we're reporting out period. So folks can, in addition to walking around the room and seeing each group's work, that each group will have a chance to report out, to bring some closure to the, to the process. FCPS staff will be on hand to answer questions that may come up, and then we will be posting all this on the website.
All right. Thank you. If I could, just maybe a little bit about how the things that we decided this morning, and I think you went over that. One of the changes that we asked to make, and you made it, was sort of that closure piece, where people could get up and report out from their group, because it's something that we've heard in the past, that people like to know that they've had a chance to just say out loud, you know, what their group's findings were. And then also, we talked about possibly having some guiding questions in addition to sort of the pros and cons of each plan. So we didn't really make much progress on what those guiding questions would be, but that's something we're thinking about. Okay. Ms. Smith?
I guess one of my problems is that, you know, the message is going to be, yes, we're doing this. I think back to some of the very emotional boundary sessions we have had, and I can only imagine the emotional state that's going to occur in the room when people don't have a chance to say, I don't like any of them. And I understand we're not putting out another scenario, but, you know, I've already talked to people that are very emotional about this issue, and they're going to feel like the board is deaf to their words if they can't at least say that. So I have a grave concern about that.
Anyone else? Any suggestions, ideas? All right. Is everybody just really ready to go home? Yes, Ted?
I might ask, I believe if we, if we structure the protocols correctly at the tables, I think people will have an opportunity to express how they, how they feel. And they may not like any of the options. I mean, I think that's a real possibility, you know, they, and even if they think the change is good, they may want a varied option. So I think by having a, the small, smaller groups, I think people will have the opportunity to convey what they think. And I know the challenge, the challenge is by not, I guess, leading with that, is the conversation becomes, are we doing or not doing it? So.
Right. And I think one thing that we talked about this morning, too, is that we're not seeking consensus. Really, we're just seeking feedback that then we will use to make our own decisions. So it's not, but, yeah.
May I ask also one question? Were y'all, or were you all contemplating having some synopsis of all the feedback available to the public online as well?
Yes.
Okay. So a collection of what we're hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. I have Mr. Belkoff and then Ms. Reed?
No.
Ms. Reed? Okay.
I do remember attending some of those community meetings a couple years ago when this issue came up the last time, and they were ugly. People really, there were, you know, a few in the minority on one point of view versus the others. It got very personal and very nasty. So I would suggest if there's a way that we could kind of head that off in the past, you know, that would be helpful. Some of it's probably unavoidable. But the other comment I have is reflecting on our discussion many, many hours ago when we first talked about the Blueprint for Change today, and that is the piece about the after-school activities. And I know that we talk here about the scenarios, but for me, I think it's absolutely critical that we have some of that information also available to people so that they understand, you know, the potential implications on sports and after-school activities.
Yeah. And does, part of our conversation this morning was about sort of next steps, continuing to have that iterative conversation with the stakeholders between now and then, so we know, we have some sense of what's going to come up at the meetings. Does that help? Okay. All right. I have Mrs. Strauss?
On the website presence, and by the way, Ms. Hunter and I presented in an NSBA conference many years ago, the last time we tried to do this, and sort of on the community engagement piece. What is the plan for the feedback form? Because it is going to be very important that we get as much information and feedback. The last time, we had 110,000 responses, if you remember.
Yes.
So how are, how are you envisioning the feedback form, how that information is going to be collected in a sensible way? Because that's going to be critical, and being able to make sure we're only getting responses from one IP address, da-da-da-da-da. So this is, this is try two at this online. So how are we going to do it?
Right. So we'll create a SurveyMonkey form that we can monitor the IP addresses, because I know we were concerned about that last time. And we can go in there and see if there's an inordinate amount and a number of folks coming from one IP address, and we look into that. And sometimes it's a worksite like the Pentagon. And so, yeah.
But it's important because-
Absolutely. To ensure the integrity of the, of the process. And so, and we will just have some synthesis of those, of the input that we get through the online form, SurveyMonkey form, just as we will with the data collected at the community dialogues. And our PLA folks will help us do that. They're really good at that.
Right. Because of SurveyMonkey, it'll be important that we get good, clear feedback, where we're going to open-ended, we mean, you know, so, because that's tricky, because we, if we get 120,000 responses online, that will be important, and that it's actually valid, helpful, useful, believable, what have you. And that's not easy to do.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Schultz?
I just wanted to emphasize that in our PEC meeting, we did talk about the notion of whether groups do break out in small, small groups, the mechanism to report back. And I think, I as a board member here, often that any type of public meeting that we hold where we, where operationally people break out into small groups, that the dissatisfaction comes from a lack of, if you will, closure or not hearing the overarching commentary, is the ability of these small groups to vocalize that which they discussed. And I think that keeps it at an authentic level, and I think that's a crucial component to us being able to, we were trying to make sure we didn't say, taking votes, because we don't think that the public are necessarily voting on this, but that we take the pulse of, of the community. So that's enough.
Thank you. All right. Anything else?
I think we're finished.
Thank you very much. But did you have something else, Barb?
Education Summit?
Well, you know, we're going to put that off to another meeting.
Quick, quick announcement. That's going to be Monday after the budget work session. We are- we are going to discuss Education Summit.
Okay.
Okay, right here.
Not before the budget work session?
What?
Just a joke, nothing.
Okay, thank you. We'll discuss that joke as well. Thank you. Okay, thank you so much. See you tomorrow.
There is some leftover food up there.